Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Manjovi, interim superintendent of the Goxon Central School District. I'd like to call the annual reorganization meeting for Goxon Central School District to order. In a moment, we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing after the pledge for a moment of silence just to honor Jerry Kilburger who passed away this past weekend. He's the father of Ed Kilburger, a high school teacher and father-in-law to Michelle Kilburger, a middle school teacher. Please keep their family and friends your thoughts and prayers. Please stand. Thank you. We'll start the meeting at the oath of office for newly elected board members. Mr. Sparrow?
Thank you for the testing. All right.
Thank you.
Hi, Tom Loftus. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Boarder according to the best of my abilities.
Thank you.
And I, Reverend Wheaton Dooson, I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Boarder according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Tom, and Brian. And again, thanks all board members. This can be a difficult job at times. It does require a lot of dedication. So it is a volunteer position and thank you for your time and efforts for the students and community of Goxon Central School District. At this time, I'll entertain nominations for President of the Board of Education for the 25-26 school year. Any nominations?
Tom Loftus.
So we have one motion for Tom Loftus to have a second. Okay, second. Do we have any other nominations from the floor? Any discussion needed? All those in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passed?
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hi, Tom Loftus. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education as President according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening. Take over.
Thank you. Time for some more reading. Do we have any nominations for Vice President for Education?
The nominee, right.
Thank you. I wouldn't mind seconding that myself. Any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those who abstained? All right. Congratulations, Mr. Wheat.
Thank you. Thank you. And I, Reverend Wheaton Dooson, I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education Vice President according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Vice President, go on. All right, just making sure that we have the agenda over here. We need a motion to approve the appointees of certain district officials. Right, John? Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education approves the remainder of the appointees of certain district officials for the 2025-26 school year as presented in the agenda. All those in favor?
Opposed?
We need a motion to approve the appointment for the district law firm. We have Billy and Scott. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education approves the appointment of Tom, Roland, Laston, Pedder, Rowan, and Matt LOP, PC as district law firm for the 2025-26 school year. All those in favor?
Opposed?
We need a motion to approve the appointment of the independent external auditor. Ashley and Brett. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education approves the appointment of Nugent, Housler, PC as independent external auditor for the 2025-26 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Need a motion to approve the appointment of independent internal auditor? Ashley and John. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education approves the appointment of Cooper, Arias, LOP as independent internal auditor for the 25-26 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Need a motion to appoint the broker of record for the 25-26 school year? We have Billy and Shannon. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education approves the appointment of NYSIR and U.S. Employee Benefits Service Group and Brokerage Agency for the 25-26 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Need a motion to approve the appointment of district physician? Scott and Brett. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education approves the appointment of Dr. Nicholas Alastair for the 25-26 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Need a motion to approve the appointment of district voting delegate, Oxba?
I'm voting aye.
Yes, I guess, that's right. Thank you.
That's okay.
So in our, in our packet, we had all of our committees and everything else. So driving back to that, did everybody have an opportunity to look at that? And last year, John, you held it down. Are you interested to do that again? Would you like to swap up with anybody? All right, excellent. While we're at it, are there any other modifications that anybody would like to make to the committees that were on?
I'm good with keeping it the same.
Yes.
All right, good?
Yep, good.
All right. So, back to the motion again? I'm filling General Sullivan here. Need a motion to approve the appointment of district voting delegate for Oxba? All right, Billy and Shannon. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education approves the appointment of John Sullivan as the district's voting delegate for the Orange County School Board Association for the 25-26 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, next, John. We need a motion to approve and appoint the district alternate voting delegate for Oxba?
Ashley and you?
Yeah.
Ashley and Scott. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education approves the appointment of Tom Loftus as the district's alternate voting delegate for the Orange County School Board Association for the 25-26 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We need a motion to approve the 25-26 designations. John and Brett. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education approves the following designations: official newspaper, official depositories, treasurer of, deputy treasurer has sole signature checks, petty cash accounts, current mileage reimbursement rates, and substitute employee rates for the 25-26 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Need a motion to approve authorizations of the Superintendent of Schools? We have Shannon and Scott. Be resolved, Board of Education approves authorizations of the Superintendent of Schools as presented for the 25-26 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just have a little space and fill in here for a moment. Who do we have listed as the impartial hearing officer? If someone can remind me?
It's you.
Thank you. There's lots of names on the list of the appointees. There's a lot of folks there, so this one's me again. We need a motion to approve the appointment of the district designee impartial hearing officer. We have Billy and Shannon. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education approves the appointment of Tom Loftus as the district's designee to appoint an impartial hearing officer for the 25-26 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Need a motion to approve the Capitol Region BOSI's communication specialist? We have Brett and John. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education agrees to continue their contract with Capitol Region BOSI's for a tier four enhanced communication specialist, specialism position with the understanding that this position is eligible at BOSI's A grade. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Need a motion to approve acting principal's resolution? Shannon and Billy? Be resolved, in the event that a school principal is not physically present in their respective school on one or more days or courses thereof during the 25-26 school year, the following position to be appointed: acting principal for all purposes, including short-term student discipline matters pursuant to 3214 of the New York State Education Law. And these are as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Need a motion to approve the non-resident tuition rates? Ashley and John? Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education sets the non-resident tuition rates for the 25-26 school year as follows: eighty-six, twelve thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars per year; seven through twelve, thirteen thousand forty-three dollars per year. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We need a motion to approve readoption of policies in effect at close of the previous year. We have Ashley and Scott. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education approves the readoption of policies in effect at the close of the previous school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Great. All right, going back to the agenda. Do we need a motion to close the meeting? All right, we have Brett and Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, thank you. And that concludes the reorganization meeting. Just close a couple of tabs here. Where did we go on the next one? Now I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education being held on, on day July 14. This is immediately following the reorganization meeting. We've already done the pledge. So we'll just jump right into our other agenda items. We need a motion for executive session. All right, we have Shannon and Billy. Be resolved, the Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent to reconvene the business portion of the meeting for discussions related to a school discipline matter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, thank you. We'll be back in a little bit. Alright, thank you, we'll be back in a little bit. Alright, thank you, everybody, we need a motion to reconvene the meeting. Alright, we have John and Ashley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Alright, moving forward. Not too much to report on tonight, from the president's report. Are there any board member committee updates or any updates from anything you haven't heard from OXPA?
Nothing recently. Nothing recently.
Very good. For the policies listed there, everybody have time to dig in review?
Yes.
Fantastic. Great, and moving down our agenda, we'll now turn it over to interim superintendent, Mr. Tom Bon Jovi.
Mr. President, thank you. So I just wanted to take a few moments first to reintroduce myself to the board and really to the coast and central school district, uh, faculty, students, and staff in the community at large. So again, Tom Bon Jovi, uh, born and raised in Seaford, Long Island, that's in Nassau County. Uh, I'm the youngest of seven. Six boys, one girl, so God bless my mother. Um, I attended Saint William the Abbot Elementary School, so first to eighth grade. Uh, at that point, we had all my siblings, we all attended there. You had a choice to go to either continue in parochial school or go to public school, so about half of us went both ways. So I went to Seaford High School. Uh, started at the junior high at the time, so just one year in ninth grade at the junior high, and then to Seaford High School. I attended Lemoine College, which is just outside Syracuse, New York. Had a major in history and education. I taught high school social studies for, oh my goodness, uh, for thirteen years. Uh, until I went, I did go to the dark side, went to administration. Uh, so that's now been twenty-four years, administration at every level, from assistant principal to superintendent. I'm going into my thirty-eighth year in education, I know. I used to hear when people said, oh, I've been in my occupation for thirty-eight years, it seemed they were very, much older than I am, but I guess I got there. But I'm truly looking forward to working in collaboration with the board of education, all faculty, students, and staff, and really the whole community, because that's what it is, it takes a whole community to raise a child and see them through to that culminating, uh, instance of their high school graduation. So thank you for the warm welcome for everyone, it's really been amazing. So with that, I'd like to talk about communication. Uh, communication with, uh, your faculty, staff, your administration, superintendent, and then ultimately with the board of education. So again, this is a partnership, uh, we're all in this together. If you ever, uh, so this is for faculty, staff, and certainly the community more. If you ever have a question, a comment, a concern, I ask, please do not hesitate to reach out following the chain of command. So if you have a question of a faculty or staff member, reach out to that person directly. They're the one who's going to be able to address your issue. If you are not satisfied or further questions, uh, you want to discuss that matter further, then reach out to that person's immediate supervisor. If you still need to discuss the matter, then please feel free to reach out to the supervisor supervisor, which may or may not be, uh, one of the central office administrators or myself. But I say with all kindness, please, if you call me first, without going through the chain of command, I'm going to very nicely and politely redirect you to the person who the issue is with. Um, you're going to get things resolved much faster. Remember, the superintendent, whoever that might be, right now it's me, I'm not there. So if there's an issue at the, uh, at a building level, to call the superintendent to resolve it, you're not going to get something resolved, because I don't know what happened. So you know, it's kinda, I don't mean to be flippant, you know, if you're at Disney and you have a bad experience buying a pretzel, you don't call Walt. You speak to the person right there who sold it to you. If you're not satisfied, then you ask for their manager or supervisor, and so on. That's how we'll get things done and get things solved. The goal for me is not to avoid your phone calls, anyone's phone calls. Believe me, I have, can, and have taken phone calls all day long in my career, but the goal really, what's the goal? The goal is to resolve anyone's concern, faculty, staff, students, or parents or guardians. Remember, the school board is a policymaking board. Their role is to make policy, approve hires, and then hire a superintendent to run the day-to-day operations. So if you reach out to the board of education, you're reaching the one group who is the furthest away from knowing the particulars, the particulars of the situation, and I can, they will also redirect you, because we want to get your issues resolved, we want to do it collaboratively. So my goal is to have a positive partnership with all parents, guardians, community groups, uh, to keep us all moving forward together. Kind of in the realm of communication, I know we're going to be speaking about cellphone policy tonight, I did want to address that right now. And I know, uh, Dr. Carter will, is going to jump in too, because we actually have a few members of our cellphone committee. So, I have a video coming out to a theater near you pretty soon on the website, an introductory video, but the cellphones, uh, I have to, we're going to need everyone on board with this. This is now a law, so, and it's a tough one, I fully admit, because I'm as guilty as charged, we're all so connected and dependent on the cellphones. Believe me, you know, uh, I say this to everyone with all due respect, you know, I have run meetings, been at meetings, been at conferences where no one's paying attention to the speaker, they're all on their phone. They're checking their email, they're checking the social media, so. So imagine for a younger person, you know, who is certainly, has been raised from the time they were born with these. It's almost kind of part of their person. So I, I realize this is going to be a huge paradigm shift for students and for the adults who want to contact their children during the day. So we're here to work with you, not work against you. So we need all parties on board to avoid the possible pitfalls of this legislation. Of course, the policy you'll see addresses how to contact your child during the school day. I, I ask and I plead with parents and guardians, if it's needed, it's something that we've all just become so familiar with that it's second nature just to text somebody. But remember, this is now, there's a bell-to-bell ban on cellphones. So I ask parents and guardians, you know, unless it's an emergency, there are ways in the policy talks about to contact your child. Of course, there's exceptions, including, you know, if it's in the student's IP for medical reasons. Students, you know, you're the ones, I need your help. So we're not here to play gotcha, I certainly, we don't, the administration, the teachers, faculty, staff, we're not here to play game of cat and mouse, kind of chasing down cellphones, okay? So my best advice to students really on the bell-to-bell is once, imagine you're going onto an airplane, so as soon as that bell rings, you put it on airplane mode, you're not allowed to use it, keep it out of sight. So we don't want to get into, you know, confiscating phone. No one wants that, you don't want that, believe me, I know that principals do not want that, and the teachers don't want that. Really, you know, think about the origin of this law, the origin is to keep schools distraction-free. And I have children too, and you know, believe me, that was a fight, you know, to keep them away from the dinner table, you know. When I'm trying to speak to some of my kids, you know, I see kids at the gym who are spending more time on their phone than actually doing an exercise, because it is, it is addictive, especially for young people. So the key word here is "together." So I do want to pass it over to Dr. Carter, kind of just add in and perhaps, you know, at least introduce her if they want to speak, our members of the committee, who I do want to thank for your time on this.
Thank you, Mr. Bon Jovi. So as we're all aware, we did engage with major stakeholders throughout the district as we went through this process of developing the policy that we will have in place for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth year. So we set out on this journey first to really educate those who would attend with us, and then to accept feedback while we were actually developing the policy. There's no question that some of the hottest topics revolved around, A, the management of the physical device, but then also in large part, the consequences that may follow if those who are not following the actual rules of the school. We have a few participants here with us this evening, we tried to get many more. Unfortunately, it's a little bit of a busy time, but we do have two of our teachers, one representing elementary and one representing our secondary. So I had reached out to them and just asked for maybe just a five-minute overview of how they felt about the actual process, what we're about to put in place, and what that might look like at each level as far as implementation and upholding the actual law. So if you don't mind, please go, go to the podium and use that wonderful green button, speak into the mic, and take your time to give us your feedback, we really appreciate it. So we have Mrs. Kelly Vaughn from Scottstown Avenue School, and Mrs. Elena Jordan from CJ Hooker Middle School.
So hi, I'm Kelly Vaughn, I work at Scottstown, special education teacher, I also have four kids. My oldest is going into the middle school, my two daughters are at Scottstown with me, and I have a baby.
I'm Elena Jordan, I just had a, my youngest graduate from Goshen, and I also graduated from Goshen. I work at the middle school, this will be my twenty-fourth year there.
So this past spring, the district sent out a Google form to gauge interest in hopes of forming a committee to work together to build a cellphone policy. The district was forming the committee as a proactive measure to address the legislation from the state that was pending at the time. The committee was made up of various stakeholders in the community, parents, teachers, and most importantly, students.
So throughout the initial meetings, we held discussions about how the district could formulate a policy that was mandated by the state and also addressed concerns from the community. In those first meetings, we were broken up into heterogeneous groups, and we were asked to discuss various open-ended questions that were provided. Some excellent thought-provoking conversations happened during those meetings. When we'd come back together, we would debrief, and a huge, like, focus was the students, because we felt like it was inevitably going to be a part of their lives, they would be the most impacted by the change of policy.
In subsequent meetings, we examined various policies that had been adopted in other districts before the legislation was even brought up, and we got to share what we thought would be good to bring to Goshen and what we did not think was in the best interest of the district. In both of our opinions, we thought the most important meeting we had was a Zoom meeting with Middletown, who had implemented a cellphone ban for the last two years, I think, on the two-year part. The committee that we met with was made up of their superintendent, some of their board members, I think Mr. Loftus, Loftus came that night as well, building administration, teachers, and they had a student representative as well. All of the stakeholders in Middletown that met with us thought it was an extremely positive experience, and they also were able to share the learning curve and adjustments that their district had to make along the way. Student from Middletown, she was able to share, it really was, the ban helped them to enhance meaningful interactions between students, because they weren't on their phones all the time in those unstructured times in the hallway and lunch, so they were able to, like, learn to be people again.
Soon after our meeting with Middletown, the state officially passed the legislation that made the cellphone ban official for the upcoming school year. The legislation was very clear-cut, and the fact that it was a complete bell-to-bell ban for internet-capable devices, it was up to each district how students would store their phones and watches for the school day. We discussed pouches, like Middletown has, and we ended up vetoing them due to costs, maintenance, and other logistics. The committee continued to have conversations about how to implement the ban and bridge the gap between what the students have always known and what will become their normal. The students had a great deal of input when, when it comes to what they would like to see, like more opportunities to go outside at the secondary level, as well as invest in things like board games, so that the students would have, you know, something to do, like something to access during their free periods.
When it came to develop the actual policy that Goshen would implement, we split it into essentially secondary and elementary levels. At the elementary level, like at Scottstown and GIS, the students are continued to be discouraged to bringing their devices to school. Any device that is brought will be, has to be silenced and kept in their bag or backpack. Storage varies from classroom to classroom in terms of, do they have a locker, is it just a cubby? At the middle school and high school level, the student devices must be silenced and stored in the locker as soon as the student arrives in the morning. The policy that Goshen developed also has specific situations that may qualify for exemptions as mandated in the legislation.
Overall, the cellphone policy committee process was well-thought-out, extremely thorough, and sensitive to both students and their families. The policy that we developed was a result of many hours of work, and we know that there will be an adjustment period initially for everybody. However, we believe that we developed a well-thought-out plan and believe it will be successful this upcoming school year.
Thank you very much for your work on that. So, you know, a well-thought-out policy will be a successful policy, thank you. Anything else, Dr. Carter, on that?
No, I would just reiterate that we're very grateful for the time that everyone has spent over multiple sessions, a very collaborative effort, and I think we've got a well documented so thank you, thank you for being here.
Not for the, not just for the board, but certainly for the community at large. There's a lot of work, a lot of things that have to get done at a school district in those summer months, you know, and a lot of work is kind of squeezed in in those two months, so I do want to thank James McGardle and his entire staff for all the work they, I know they're doing now and will be doing throughout the summer. I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of some of the projects that are happening, because it does include some abatement of asbestos. So before anyone panics if they see signs up or, you know, tubes coming out the windows, I asked James just to give a brief report to the board and to the public on what's happening in the district building-wise over the summer.
Good evening, members of the board. Interim Superintendent, Mr. Bon Jovi, Dr. Carter, Ms. Pam Blamrin, thank you for your opportunity to share with you what we're going to be doing and what we are doing this summer. So I kind of broke it down, building by building, and I'm just going to run through it real quick for you. If you have any questions, please, please feel free to ask. So district-wide, we have invested in nine new exterior doors that were rotting and falling away. They've been ordered, we're waiting for production for them to be shipped, so we can start having them put in. August fourth, we're doing a complete district-wide stage rigging and lighting inspection. Main Street, there's an asbestos abatement project in full swing as we speak. The carpet has been removed from the second and third floor in-house. And we have a walk-through tomorrow with a couple of vendors who want to put a bid in on the abatement project. At the high school, we had four catch basins repaired, the ones that knock you out of your seat as you're driving up the main driveway. Took care of those, those are completed. We had six various roof leaks at the high school, all completed. And in addition to that, there was a warranty repair of the trim coat roof on the lobby of the high school, completed. Crack fill seal coat restriping of the high school and GIS, we got pushed back a day. Crack fill has been completed, the seal coating should start tomorrow, weather permitting. The PA, PA project at the high school, I know Mr. Starrett's been taking a lead on that, and he's been working with the various vendors, CoreBTS and whatnot. CJ Hooker, we have a very large asbestos abatement project going on in the kitchen, and in room two thirty-five A and two thirty-five B. There was two air, mini-split air conditioners put in at the high school, and we have one more that is slated to be put in CJ Hooker in early August. Drain controls project has been, has been going for about a week now. Most of the cabling is near completion, and in the next week or two, they will start installing the hardware in the unit vents and the valves to follow. We refurbished and screened and put two coats of poly on the, on the new gym floor at CJ Hooker, that's, that's completed. And we did one catch basin in the corner of Erie, in the corner of that apartment at CJ Hooker. GIS, we're repaid, we're milling and repaving the entire fire access road that goes around the building. That's slated for July twenty-first. Air conditioners have been peppered throughout the building, and that is an ongoing process in all the buildings. Again, crack, crack fill, seal coat, and restriping will start tomorrow. And we have one catch basin that's set in the curb, and that will be taking place in August. SAS, we just completed the resetting of the pavers, the edging, and putting in a piece of drainage to go into an existing catch basin. So when we get a massive amount of rain like this evening, the water doesn't go underneath the library door. We put in a curtain drain there. There was a warranty repair done of the trim coat roof system, that's been completed. And there was a donation from the PTA for three new playground apparatuses. They were waiting on a ship date. New drainage and underground piping is going in at the bus garage. Once that is completed, it will allow us to completely mill and repave the bus garage from fence to fence. We're leaving the front alone. And that's pretty much what's happening in today's current events, thank you.
Thanks, James, I appreciate it.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'd ask the PPS and then each of the buildings, just to give, again, a report of what's going on in the summer. So Principal Nick Pantin-Lion with High School is here, so I'll let Nick give his report, and then I can report on the other buildings.
Good evening, everyone. Great. So we're kicking off the summer junior class meeting, so our guidance council has been hard at work, meaning when students get prepared for their senior year, and we're very excited about our fine arts department. They've begun curriculum writing in, or they will, in the individual arts assessment pathway. So in the fields of art and music, there is a four-plus-one graduation pathway where they'll develop, take three core classes and develop a portfolio and rubric that our fine arts team is working on, and Dr. Carter is going to add on to some of the things we're working on as well. We have two new courses also that we're preparing for, robotics two, extension robotics one. So Dylan Johnson will work with our students and really create advanced hands-on STEM activities and more rigor than robotics one. And then also in our fax department, we started a foundation of life. This is inclusive family consumer science course teaching essential life skills, adulting, if you will, which I could have used before college, digital literacy, sewing, job interviewing, so it's a nice way to really get our students ready for it to be career and college-ready. And then we're excited about three new clubs, Crafted with Kindness. These were formerly trial clubs, that really starts off with philanthropy and donating to local charities with the art they do and bracelets. Pickleball club, you may have seen them play the seniors and lose multiple times, we're still, we're still practicing, but we've got some work to do. And also in the realm of athletics, Morgan's Message, which is a, a program that supports student-athlete mental health and really reduces stigma around emotional wellness. And along with that, we are getting prepared for freshman and new student orientation, which is August twenty-eighth, six to eight p.m. Thank you.
Okay, at the middle school, so they're scheduling interviews for the assistant principals, special ed teachers, French teachers, and as James mentioned, there is an abatement going on. At the intermediate school, they're looking at some, you know, they're looking at ways to perhaps kind of tweak the master schedule, get a little more, be more efficient with our instructional time, so more to come on that. So certainly they're adjusting schedules and looking at programs based on the loss of teacher aid last year. The FLOX program, the Choose Love program, they're reviewing data from last year and refining structures for better implementation for this fall. There was a lighting upgrade that's completed now in the auditorium. And this, they'll be shifting to digital notifications for class placements this coming year. So change will allow to communicate more efficiently with parents, which is always our goal. Certainly reduce costs with postage and materials. We'll be using Parent Square, which I know that, I've been informed that the parents and guardians are fully aware and on Parent Square, and if they need assistance, we'll give that to them. So in mid-July, there'll be a message explaining the shift to digital notifications. They'll follow up with a message about two weeks before the final release, and then a final message that will include document and full timeline. So they might also be sending out emails directly to parents in addition to the Parent Square to make sure that the message reaches everyone. At the elementary school, James mentioned, so there'll be a new playground equipment coming in, so special thanks to the PTO for that donation. They'll be expanding a phonetics awareness program in the first grade, so that's been in effect in the kindergarten. So they'll be extending that to the first graders, so the extension of the program, which will be nice. There's talk about, you know, with Dr. Carter also, to possibly move to digital notification for teacher placement and report cards, and there'll be a rollout again through Parent Square, so more to come on that. In the world of PPS, so if you recall, though I wasn't here at the time, so a, there was going to be a presentation given at the June meeting for the summary of education service analysis, so that didn't happen. So we will be, Dr. Carter, Dr. Henashat, myself, will kind of take that information and we'll condense it, and we'll have a report at the August meeting. Also at the August meeting, we're going to report on a new designation from the state, TSI designation, but we'll explain exactly what that is, and really the advantages it's for Goshen. The extended school year program began July eighth, that goes to August fourteenth. That is three days a week, three hours a day. It focuses on math and reading skills. All students receive uninterrupted blocks of reading and math instruction, actually as well as a period of yoga, so I might stop in on that. For yoga, it's to support relaxation, mindfulness, and self-regulation. This year, new versions of standardized testing used for special evaluations are This year, new versions of standardized testing used for special evaluations are available. So we'll be working with Orange Olster Boses and other outside testing companies to provide more P D for our staff. And as I believe you're aware, P P S is working very closely with the business office and Regis Star because this will be the first year that we'll be putting in for Medicaid billing. So a lot to cover, but we wanted to make sure that we got it all in at this meeting so that everyone is aware of what's going on this summer. So that's everything for now, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bonjovi, and we very much appreciate that thorough updates and all of the various reports. And very much do appreciate all the work the cell phone committee had done. And just to say it again, yes, I was able to get to one of those meetings and the questions that the students were asking everyone to be there. They were asking things I didn't even think of. It was really, so thank you all again. All right, moving on to our next quarter of business, we have our Assistant Superintendent for Business report, Miss Rain Ben Puplamren.
Thank you, Mr. Loffus. I don't have an official report tonight because we don't have our financial statements closed yet. We're preparing for the external audit. The audits will be coming the first week of August, so we're scrambling around trying to finish that. We did have our first payroll coming up tomorrow, actually, and this is the first one going to twenty-four pays this year for twelve-month employees or twenty pays for ten-month employees. So this is the beginning of a change, so everybody's prepared for that. Otherwise, we're, that's about all I have for tonight. I'll have more for the next one. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Personnel and Technology Report, Dr. Jason Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Loffus. Just a few updates for you on some of the items that we had lingering as we ended the previous school year. So we had come up on the need to renew our C T E pathway, which I know that we've discussed. Just to refresh your memory, we did start there in twenty-twenty, so for the twenty-twenty-one school year, we did have our cybersecurity and computer technology pathway developed. And so that runs a five-year course, which has now expired or, well, it expired at the end of June. However, we did work collaboratively, myself, Mr. Pantelion and our team, to fill out that packet and send that off to the state. And so although it's a, it's a four-page packet from the state, all in all, with all of the work involved, all of the research necessary, it comes out to about an eighty-page packet. So it was a good collaborative effort, so that packet now sits with NICE at, we hope to hear back soon. I anticipate that there may be one or two or a few more corrections that must be made, but that's kind of how it goes and as long as we make all necessary corrections prior to the end of September, we should be good to go to continue with that pathway. So again, that's really important to us to maintain and develop new pathways, although we haven't heard anything finalized by the Board of Regents regarding the Rubric Commission. Those pathways and development and maintenance is really important. And so leading into the next pathway that Mr. Pantelion had talked about, that individual arts assessment pathway is really important to us. And although he, he covered the basics, I just wanted to reiterate a few points that are really important. Now, this is a pathway that's really designed for those that not only excel in the arts while in high school, but have a very vested interest in maybe looking to either enter career mode or go into post-secondary education, pursuing a degree in, in the arts. And so for us, we're going to fill out the application with a team of five of our educators at the high school level so that we can develop the pathway, of course, individual arts assessment, but we're focused on visual media arts and then also music because right now that's where we're very accomplished. So in the future, we may be able to move into, for instance, theater, but we're going to start with those two. And so we have five teachers, as I had mentioned, we're going to send approval to you for some summer curriculum works that they can develop, those local assessments and portfolio-based assessments that are necessary, along with kind of polishing up the rubrics using the models that are available so that our students can begin that in twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So we look to have that completed and ready to go, and I will keep you updated. That'll be due toward the end of August. We continue to have discussions about, of course, a retrieval of data, but using data for instructional purposes, right, driving instruction with proper data. And so we do subscribe to I X L here, we do have a full suite available to us. And so working with Dr. Wentworth at G I S and Mrs. Driscoll at Scottstown Avenue School, we're looking for a way to begin to pilot the I X L real-time diagnostics because it is available to us. And so this will be unique for us. I do think that we can identify, to begin, a select population to really see what this program can do for us. And so students will take an initial assessment, we anticipate that taking somewhere around forty to forty-five minutes as the first time, kind of develops a baseline. And then as long as our students stay up to date with this assessment by taking maybe twenty minutes of time or maybe a little longer than twenty minutes to complete ten to fifteen questions per week, the program actually adapts by content strand, E L A and math, identifies some weaknesses and develops individualized planning for our students. And so I don't think that we're quite at the point where we want to go widespread, but I'll continue to work with Dr. Wentworth and Mrs. Driscoll to begin to implement this, to really retrieve that data and see what it can do for us. Our number one thing is to not over-test our students, we don't want to inundate with assessment. I'm well aware that we've got our universal screening tools and N W V A maps that we're responsible for. And so we're looking to implement this, we're looking to gather that information to really drive instruction, to close those gaps that are labeled, or identify rather, but we'll be mindful of over-assessing our students. And so stay tuned for some information on I X L, real-time diagnostic. Also just wanted to mention, you know, it's, it's only been, let's call it maybe two weeks of time in between graduation and where we stand today. But in addition to what we were just speaking about, we did have the opportunity to complete the coordinated monitoring for education stabilization funds. And so my office, along with Mrs. Mambo Lamren's office, we collaborated for quite some time to compile all of the data necessary to kind of track those funds from two thousand twenty-two all the way through two thousand twenty-five. And so that's all of the S R and G R funding. It's so much more than just showing a purchase order and some documentation, but we were able to get through that. You know, Michelle Serna in my office had a great deal to do, and I know that Amanda Barone in Ms. Mambo Lamren's office had a great deal to do as well. And so that is ready to be submitted and we'll wait to see what we get back from that. In addition to that, the twenty-four, twenty-five targeted monitoring review focusing on all of the title grants has also been finalized in the same collaborative manner. And so that's ready to go out, we'll see what, what comes of that as well. Don't anticipate seeing anything from that in the very near future, but it always makes its way back. And then just a brief update on hiring, one of our key administrative roles, if you will, our Director of Health, P E and Athletics. So Mr. Bonjovi and I had a chance to look at every single application that came in, you know, kind of whittled down through a process, looking for the proper credentials, making one eligible to have that position. And then collaboratively, we went through and put together what we think is a strong pool. And so we will begin those interviews on Wednesday, the sixteenth, that'll be the first round, with a committee comprised of health, P E teachers throughout the district and also coaches. We also have a G T A union representative with us. And so we look to get through that process on Wednesday and potentially have some finalists to our offices for myself and Mr. Bonjovi to interview in his office, potentially for Friday, that would be a soft goal for us. And that concludes my report for the time being.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Carter. All right, moving on, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Bill Shannon, do you resolve upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools? Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, pardon me, I don't mean to interrupt, if I may.
Yes, please.
We do have two of our candidates here with us this evening, if you'd like to just briefly meet them.
We absolutely would, thank you.
Yeah, so come on up to the podium.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, you don't need a long speech, but if you could just introduce yourself, just say your name and your assignment.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Carter. All right, so I can see that the green light is on, right, Mr. Sullivan, so you, you are ready to roll.
Hi, my name is Martha Pagan, and I'll be working with, as a custodian at the school. I think James is at the middle school, right? I was at the middle school, I just wanted to introduce myself, thank you so much for having me here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and welcome to the Goshen Central School.
Welcome to the family.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Victor Asuaje. I'll be a Spanish teacher. As you can see, if you check my CV, my accent, I have a strong background in the Spanish language and culture. So I'm excited, okay, now to talk to these students and hope that this is going to be the best year for us. And I'm just excited about this. So again, if you need to talk to me anytime, you know, be the high school, and I'm going to enjoy this, there's no doubt about it.
Thank you, Victor, appreciate your welcome.
Thank you.
All right, yes, thank you so much for having me, we appreciate you guys introducing yourselves. And we definitely wish you all the best of luck in this forthcoming year. Thank you for joining the team. Right. And just a reminder, when we move into the old business and new business, at times there are items that are mentioned as presented and policy numbers, policy names, specific amounts for transfers of capital, money, things like that. You can find it published on the resolutions. So some of those items that you might not be aware of as presented, you can always find them online available if you're interested to see what all those are. All right. So moving forward, we need a motion to approve policy updates, second readings, renumbering, renaming, readoptions to retirements. We have Ashley, Brett. Do you resolve upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools? Board of Education approves the second readings, renumbering, renaming, readoptions of policies as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting and special meeting. Billy and Shannon. Do you resolve upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools? Board of Education approves the minutes of June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five regular meeting and June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five special meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion to accept the recommendations of the Committee of Special Education, Committee on Preschool Special Education? We have Brett and Ashley. Do you resolve, Board of Education hereby arranges for the special education program and services based upon the recommendations made for preschool and school-aged students with disabilities by the Committee on Preschool Special Education and Committee on Special Education during the period January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five through and including June, July third, twenty twenty-five, and directs the district to arrange for the provisions of said special education programs and services to such preschool and school-aged students with disabilities as recommended during such time period by the C P S A and C S A. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion to approve budgetary transfers. Billy and Shannon. Do you resolve upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools? Board of Education approves the budgetary transfers in aggregate over one hundred and five thousand dollars as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion to accept donations and authorize increase to the budget. Scott?
I just wanted to quickly jump in, thank Nicer for their very generous donation to the district.
Wonderful, thank you, we appreciate it. I threw you off, yeah. That's right, sir, we did the motion, it is official, yes, very good. All right, be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools? Board of Education accepts the donations from the New York Schools Insurance, Circlical, Nicer, as presented. Be it further resolved, Board of Education approves in the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget to support the associated expenditures as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion to approve the individual special education agreements. Ashley and John. Do you resolve upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools? Board of Education approves entering into individual agreements with J D Ultra Care Therapeutic Horizons in Greenberg, Norton Castle Union Preschool District to provide services to special education students as presented. Be it further resolved, Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to execute said agreements. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion to approve the entry of names of the five graduates in the Board of Education minutes. We have John and Scott. Do you resolve upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools? Board of Education approves the entry of the names of the two thousand twenty-five graduates in the Board of Education minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And congratulations again to those graduates. I know that, I want to thank Principal Pantelion for all the work. I've been there, I know how tough it is to have a, you know, and you have Mother Nature kind of bearing down on you. So thankfully, she smiled upon us that night. So congratulations to the students and whatever your plans are in the future.
Thank you, sir. All right. We need a motion for the decision related to a student expungement request to approve it. We have Brett and Scott. Do you resolve, Board of Education hereby approves the expungement of the following student listed below consistent with the Code of Conduct. Be it further resolved, Board of Education hereby approves Superintendent of Schools' stated necessary steps to effectuate the expungement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion to approve the declaration of emergency asbestos remediation at the Main Street School? We have Billy and Shannon. Says the word asbestos in there, I'll read through this one, it's just a little bit lengthy, but. Whereas on Tuesday, September twentieth, whereas on Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, the district reported an incident where pieces of masonry and mortar became dislodged and fell through the suspended ceiling on the second floor of the district's Main Street Administration Building located at two-two-seven Main Street, Goshen New York. And whereas Land Associates Engineering Planning Architecture Survey, Surveying L K was requested to perform an emergency structural inspection. During this inspection, it was determined that there is no major structural issues with the building. However, additional masonry mortar that was part of the original firestop assembly was noted in the plenum space. This mortar was originally applied as a fire-stopping material to seal off voids in the ceiling plenum between the corridor and classrooms. It was poorly installed over structural steel girders using brick and mortar. And whereas Land recommended to probe the masonry mortar, fire stopping at each floor level to determine if there were any loose sections that required removal to prevent a future bowling hazard. And whereas Orange Olster Boses tested and confirmed the presence of asbestos-containing mortar within the building and Quest was contracted to perform the required environmental consulting and remediation services. And whereas the Board is empowered to determine that the exposure of these activities is an ordinary contingent exposure within the meaning of the two thousand twenty-three, section twenty, twenty-three of the New York State Education Law and seventeen point two-one of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education, and that the project constitutes an emergency within the meaning of one oh three of the General Municipal Law to have, to allow for the abatement and remediation, including air testing and monitoring, should be approved by the State Education Department on the expedited basis. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby determines and declares that the cost of the abatement and mediation of the masonry mortar fire stopping at the Main Street School building, including air testing and monitoring and incidental costs and expenses constitutes an ordinary contingent expense within the meaning of section two zero two-three of the Education Law, one seventy point two of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education, constitutes an emergency within the meaning of one oh three of the General Municipal Law, and hereby authorizes the expenditure of those funds necessary for such purposes. And be it further resolved that the Board hereby determines that the abatement and remediation activities described above at the Main Street Building, including air testing, monitoring and associated work, will not have significant environmental impact and declares this project a type-two action pursuant, six one seven point five. And substantial changes in the structure of the facility and no further actions required. Be it further resolved, the Superintendent of Schools hereby authorized to file the necessary proper paperwork with the State Education Department to proceed with the emergency remediation of the domestic piping supply at the Scottstown Avenue School. And be it further resolved that the Board hereby authorized the Superintendent of Schools to make transfers between and within functional unit appropriations and general fund in order to pay for the cost of this ordinary contingent expense. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In case you forgot, we are approving an emergency work. Thank you. Need a motion to approve amendment stipulation settlement. We have John Shannon. Do you resolve, Board of Education, the Goshen Central District hereby approve- Be resolved, board of education, the government of Central School District hereby approves amended stipulation of settlement. The due process complaint filed regarding student number zero-three-zero-four-two-zero-two-four, originally approved on March fourth, nineteen twenty-four meeting. And be it resolved, the board of education authorizes superintendent to sign amended stipulation settlement. Favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstain? Yes. Need a motion to approve twenty-twenty-five, twenty twenty-six for the committees. We have Billy and Shannon. Be resolved, board of education approves the list of board committees for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Very good. Alright, moving on to our next item. Privilege of the floor. We've gone through this a few times and everything is spread clearly and sit on your form, so just as a basic reminder, please keep our comments civil and respectful and we don't speak about in public session particular students or district individuals. So we have one sign up here, uh Lucas Yorachi.
You're already on. Great pronunciation. Not everybody gets that last name right.
I cheated. I asked.
Did you really? Alright, guys.
So just a little bit about myself. I graduated from Gosha in twenty-seventeen. The subject I'd like to talk about is the tennis courts. I was on the tennis team all four years, first singles, one of the top players in the section. And the next part I'm just gonna read right off. Uh so recently, I've heard concerning rumors suggesting the possible removal of the middle school courts entirely. This idea to me, very disheartening. These courts serve a far greater purpose than many may have realized. Beyond being space for tennis players, they're regularly used by families and community members seeking quality time outdoors. They provide a valuable recreational resource that fosters both physical activity and community connection. Moreover, our varsity boys and girls tennis programs are consistently competitive, achieving success at both the team and achieving individual levels as well. Failing to invest in and maintain adequate facilities does disservice to the hard work and dedication of these student athletes. I urge you to consider the broader impact these courts and to support improvements rather than remove.
Thank you very much, Lucas. Moving on to our next item on our agenda here, we relabeled this one a little bit, board member comments and open agenda items. Letting interim superintendent to add any comments or bring up any conversation items as well, not just board member issues, if you. So leaving that open if anybody would bring anything up for discussion.
Over the last couple of years, we've talked a little bit here and there as board uh about possible restructuring of some of the meetings. Couple of those ideas I would draw around was to move to one regular meeting, one workshop meeting. I know that there was an attempt for us to view some other districts and then it came to fruition. Uh one of the other items um that were discussed was simply looking at the agenda and um approving it while listing all the items with the ability to pull certain items. Uh but approve as uh presented. Uh we definitely live in a world where everything is digital, um everything is accessible uh to the community. Um when you look at our views on on YouTube, it's typically not um not saying we don't have a, you know, it's a hot seller. Um but we don't have many views unless there's one or two hot topics, in which case most of the time people are looking to see a discussion item or what's being discussed on privilege of the floor. There, while you did a great job of reading about these substance payment, they're not really looking to hear, you know, President Alak just speak about that. So, looking if we could um you know, kind of talk a little bit about it, uh you know, whether this meeting, next meeting, um you know, I just feel with it. Those items have been floating around for a couple of years and since this is the start of a new year, um with the new interim superintendent, I I think it might be a good idea just to kind of see that. And again, the goal would be to provide a lot more opportunity for discussion and to kind of shorten meetings a little bit to make it more appealing to people to come in and speak their mind.
Yeah, I'm I'm personally really glad you brought that up. Reading through everything is not the best part of this and it is something that we've had open for a little while, a work session or the consens agenda. So my personal opinion is that I'm very much open to that. I I wouldn't mind posing the question to Mr. Bon Jovi, in your experience in other places have you seen, um you know, maybe on on both of those things that Billy was talking about? The reduced agenda and also the work sessions, what have you seen in your experience that you can share with us?
Yes, as the president, so I'm not saying that this is what we've, what has been said in the past. But I would say there's a seven-word killer phrase in any organization. Uh that's how we've always done it. That sticks. That's how we have always done it. That's not a good reason to not change. So I remind you, though I know you know this, but I also remind the the community, you know, board members, you're you are volunteers. Uh you're volunteering with families and friends, children, jobs. Uh and this can be a very stressful job. You do not get paid for it in money, certainly get paid in satisfaction, but other school districts uh in Orange County certainly have made the transition to either one board meeting a month or only a few board meetings where there's two. So for example, I I did do a quick study. So you have four districts who strictly have one, so I'm talking about eighteen districts, I heard back from seventeen. So out of seventeen districts in Orange County, four of them only have one board meeting a month. And they get it all done in one board meeting. Remember, uh it reminded to you, but also to the public, a school board meeting is a business meeting that happens to have to take place in public. It is a meeting where a school business has to get done. Um not that I would suggest this, just so everyone understands, by law, you technically only have to have board meetings quarterly, so no one does that. But two board meetings a month is a lot. That's a lot of meetings, especially in the shorter months. I almost feel like uh in places where I've been where you're squeezing in two meetings just because you've always had two meetings. So in November, December, January, February, where you have vacations in there, it almost feels like you had a board meeting, then they had very little school because of a vacation, then you have another board meeting. Um and it's a lot. And moving to even a hybrid of um you know, whatever it comes out to, uh eight and four, six and six, whatever it is as far as months, it it de-stresses the board meetings for you. It also makes board membership more enticing to other people, because if someone knows twice a month, why, you know, oh, there I can make twice a month. That it's a big commitment twice a month. So again, there's four districts in Orange County who have just one board meeting and one of those just has it one month, but they have two. Um but eleven of them out of the seventeen have a mix of board meetings. So um in in my experience, it really has been quite successful. The only adjustment you would want, you would need to make is that especially on support staff, sometimes there's a lot of appointments that have to happen. Um and you can't necessarily wait for that person to start for the board meeting. So it is legal uh and appropriate that someone can start and then when you you appoint them, even if it's two weeks later, back to their start date. So that you don't have to wait for the board meeting for someone to start, especially if we need that position. Um so you know, for for me, look, I'm gonna be here, I get paid, um but you don't. And it is, it it can be a heavy lift to be a board member at times. I understand. So I feel your your business can get done at one board meeting. So I would suggest, you know, not necessarily making any changes tonight, but to continue to kind of take some think time, as I say, you know, run the tape uh between now and the next board meeting, because you have two board meetings in August where you can uh revise your board meeting schedule starting in September. So quite honestly, you know, September, you do, we sometimes have the taxer we have to get done, so, but you know, there's no issue, honestly, doing one board meeting October, November, December, January, February, June, July. So right there, there's seven out of the twelve where you don't really need to have two board meetings. Remember, you can always add a board meeting in, which I'm sure you have, for either a special meeting or during budget time, if you need to, you know, because of uh, you know, to meet the deadlines. But minimally, there's at least seven months, maybe eight, where you can only, you only need one board meeting. Um so that's just from my experience, I, that'd be my advice to you.
Yeah, thank you for the feedback there. So pull it back a little bit, um to to your point about the reduced agenda.
Okay.
So in 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 what you've seen in the past, or if if anybody else hasn't seen the reduced agenda, would just the items be listed that were up for being approved?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, that that will be it?
Yes, and and you know, Mr. Bon Jovi, you've seen a lot more than me, so if you want to add prior uh or if you want to add first.
No, you're fine.
Okay, um and I didn't mean to put you on the spot, you know, it was really just a discussion that came up uh tonight. Um
I know, not at all.
Yes, so essentially, uh in my experience, I've seen uh districts where in the back, in the background, they'll have all the agenda items posted. Um the board member wants to abstain from one or pull an item for a discussion, um or for any reason at all, you would say, you know, items number one point zero one through three point five, um and then three point six, you know, like to pull that, and you can approve based upon all those items at once. Um and if no one is appaling thing, it could be items, you know, numbers one through fifteen. And all those items are on the agenda. We know that we don't change the agenda once the agenda is set. Um so the public has viewing of it prior to coming in the meeting. Um you know, since, you know, privilege of the floor doesn't involve them coming up and talking about the individual items uh or at least our impact on the vote, I should say, uh I don't see an issue with that.
What what does everybody else feel about? I I mean, I have no objection to the reduced agenda. You brought it up before. I think it might be a nice way to condense it.
I'm not. I'm disappointed as I did not hear you say tax search here ever again. I think that does make sense.
I'll be happy to pass on that one.
You could work, you could work it in, and you'd be like, three times a year, I'll be out.
Yeah.
Yes, I'd like to pull the tax search here, I read.
Yeah.
Can you read that one, please?
That's why we voted for you.
You didn't know this, you.
Great, we'll get this guy pronouncing that again. Um yeah, but everybody else, what do you think? Do you do you wanna try it next meeting to kind of convince the agenda?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think the more efficient we can be, the better, and it's not about trying to make the meeting shorter, you know, to get out of here. I, you know, obviously, when this meeting ends, the executive session typically goes on for a long time as well, so um you know, I I just think the more efficient we can be with the public's time, the better.
Mm-hmm.
Um to Billy's point, people have already read the agenda, I would assume in most cases, so reading it word for word doesn't remind anything of the new voice, which is again, as much as I appreciate it, it seems.
You know, it could almost provoke comment by pulling things out and talking, at least from us, is that that you're you're more inclined to to take a look at something you want to discuss than have more of an open discussion between us, I think it'd be beneficial overall.
And just to be clear, the information will still all be out there and available. It's just, it's just, it's there, it's just not all stated.
Forever.
Okay, just to make it very clear, everyone will still have access to all the information.
Right, and just one point that I know we went to painful meetings uh a couple of months ago, but where anybody hasn't been here, there's QR codes all over the place in here for you to scan and get everything. So when you walk in the door, if you wanted to read the agenda, it it is available, so.
And the two conversations really complement each other, so you know, the, you'll be thinking about, you know, maybe we'll move to, you know, some sort of hybrid model, having one board meeting for several months. Uh it makes the meeting more efficient, so that because really you want the time for academic presentations, student presentations, um because again, it's a business meeting. Uh so you can get the business done faster, save more time to focus on why we're here, and that's students.
That that's an excellent point, because part of what I really appreciate, I had mentioned it earlier, were just some of those kickoff reports. Really liked hearing about what's happening in the summer. That's great. What's happening at each of these buildings? And if we can save all of that time and you know, there you go, it's it's one big sentence, that that's definitely, more of that stuff is great. Um okay, so I think we're settled. We'll we'll work on that next agenda meeting, kind of getting things concise, make sure we communicate that a bit. And yes, great, so I I'm glad we're making this shift. Uh regarding the notion of a workshop-style meeting.
Hmm.
Um Mr. Bon Jovi, do you have any feedback or experience where a district has done a workshop-style meeting? And and what type of items do you think would be developed in that meeting? And and you've seen this before too, right? Workshop styles?
No.
Uh okay.
I I I've heard the concept, um I've spoken to you on it, I haven't actually seen it.
Right, oh, you have too? Oh, great.
Logistically, are we able to do, if you go to one a month on some, weren't we talking about with the two a month, one workshop, one business?
Yeah, yeah, I I think, well, I think originally when we started talking about it was we we were looking at two meetings a month and it was sort of one was going to be a workshop and one was going to be a regular meeting. I I think that was what we originally started to talk about, I mean, at this point, you know, two years ago. Um so so I, you know, I guess when we hear what Mr. Bon Jovi, you know, the meeting, what you're saying about the workshops, and decided that's something we wanted to get.
That's, yeah.
So the workshop is really just that, a workshop where you go over the potential agenda for the actual meeting coming up. There's not specifics in there, unfortunately, though, because it's just people, they're looking at, especially for hirings, the different positions that are going to be filled. But you don't always have the names and the final decision from the offer to an employee, potential employee on there, so you just look at that. And then you look to see what action items will be on the agenda for the actual board meeting. Sometimes it seems a little redundant, I guess is the word, or unnecessary, but during the uh budget season, it is kind of nice to have an extra meeting to go over the budget and the presentations and have those discussions.
It sounds pretty similar to the, you know, you guys are, the agenda setting meeting that you guys already have.
It is, yes, it is. And this, I know there's one district uh who, for almost all twelve months, this is in Orange County, uh does have two ones a meeting, does a workshop. Uh you know, it can be redundant. I, you know, I was never a fan of specifically having workshops planned each month. Uh if you need one, I would suggest you can add a workshop at any time. Because that kind of defeats the purpose of kind of getting, trying to get to one board meeting.
And and I guess, you know, depending on the topic I can, that's something that if we keep the meeting very efficient in terms of the business portion, allowing more time for conversation, that
Yes.
that workshop could happen right here in this time, and it's not ten o'clock at night, you're half hour into the meeting. You you know, for example, um tennis courts was brought up tonight.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe a few months ago, we talked about high school tennis courts need some work, and there were some questions asked about providing backup, right?
Mm-hmm.
And some investigative information. So maybe we keep that reduced, and instead of workshopping it, we make sure it comes up now. And maybe, you know, Mr. Ricardo comes back and here's the investigative information we found that that made sense, or actually you asked something, but this was the real thing we should have looked at. So maybe those types of things come into this portion of the meeting. Alright, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I agree, yeah, mm-hmm, sounds great.
Yeah, I like it. Great. Yeah, I I I, you know, I think we've all said this before, that the more that can be discussed right there in that time, it it does add to the the transparency, if you will, of those necessary conversations. Yeah, alright, good, good starting points. Um anybody else that I I need to discuss? I had two notes. Surprise! Um in our um governance manual, it's that time of year where we made those notes, that July and August to consider board goals. Uh one of the items in our governance manual also talks about reviewing the the district-wide goals. And you know, Mr. Bon Jovi is here now with us and maybe not for this meeting. But you know, I'll just hold on one second, close the mic and let you know. It it talks about in the July and August meetings, reviewing the district wide goals, that still makes sense, any revisions, discussing them. So I think that something to think about. Policy was a big one for us last year, right? I think we're fairly close, Maureen, what you said, we're getting there. Right, I thi- I think we're well over the halfway point with the full policy audit. Um so I think I would like to invite the board, let's consider any board goals we might have. And um we talked about an evaluation last year, we talked about is there an evaluation tool we can use as a board? I think all of us really want to be the best governance team we can be. And we have access to um what's that called, Super Eval, which also has a board
Mm-hmm.
self-evaluation platform as well. So I'll shoot a reminder on, but I think let's look at that nice and early this year. And let's earmark next meeting for any of your goals. Um I'm to that, it's been two years now, we haven't had too many changes of seats here, where we had a a board workshop where Ken and someone, ready?
Susan.
Thank you, Ken and Susan came in. Last year, we put the question out there. It is the same team. I think those trainings are good, but does anybody see a need for that or any maybe a recommendation from Mr. Bon Jovi, any any type of
Something different?
Something different that would be beneficial to us to be able to grow as a governance team? Yes.
I'm I'm open to look for something different, suggestions?
I have no suggestion, but I can speak with President Alford, so we can talk about different options.
And and uh you know, last year when we spoke about this, we had Ken and Susan come in and we did a a workshop with um central administration. And you know, putting ideas up on post-it and just talking about the roles and responsibilities of governance team, it was good, but anything within that realm, you know, let's think about it as well now in several months.
I would say you do something like we did, uh what probably doesn't feel necessary, just that we're all
Wouldn't want to do it.
kind of still tenured from when we did that meeting last, so.
Mm-hmm, different would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah. I like it. Okay, so yeah, Mr. Bon Jovi, you know, we'll we'll kind of see if he can bring us some anything, and we'll spit all that.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Um I I did just have, you know, a another point to bring up as we now move into officially the round of governance team leadership. Uh we livestream our board meetings, that that's something I think we've been doing since COVID. And I was just curious, you know, what everybody's thought was about continuing to livestream, if maybe there was any feedback about our other districts live streaming, uh if I were, if I were correct, I think it became a requirement during COVID, but maybe it has since not been a requirement anymore, we've kind of, what's the phrase you use? Just because we did it that way, was the right way? Um so I don't know, I just wanted to hear anybody's thoughts on continuing to livestream, if they feel it's necessary, is there a benefit to it at all?
I think in the spirit of what Mr. Bon Jovi said earlier with Pan Square, better utilize than that as communication, that we could go down that route as far as communicating our agenda and all the agenda items proactively, for seven to find them. And that that may reach more people than the small viewership we have on YouTube at this point. And there's a different way to uh to go out, the the same theory, just because we didn't do it, doesn't mean that it's gonna work the best for us.
You just hit a great three word, I think, you know, Brett's saying proactive communication is important. I don't know, anybody else that thinks that, but if there's a way that you know, there's another suggestion, how we're putting some information out there as opposed to digging through YouTube, yeah, I think that's a great way to think about it.
I would suggest, or maybe throw it out there, that if we're not gonna livestream it, I still think it should be videoed and you know, maybe seen in a podcast or maybe literally as the next day. Maybe it's important for people to watch and see it if they really want to. As far as far as transparency, and gives everybody the opportunity to just look if they can't be here in attendance tonight.
Yeah, any other thoughts on that?
I'd be curious on what the expenses are for us to livestream it.
And so it's a a little under two thousand dollars, the total expense to livestream, it's been at that for the past several years. Um it doesn't sound like a lot of money necessarily, but you know, that's two thousand dollars, that can go towards something for kids too. Um so if we, you know, you could look at um what is certainly in any district, you know, if when there's kind of a hot topic, viewership goes up. But how many of that viewership is live and how many of it is maybe the next day? So there's three districts in Orange County who do not livestream, they just, they record it and then they post it a day or two afterwards. Um so that's an option too. So again, it's just the difference between live streaming and, you know, think of our own lives. Um you know, things that the the world has changed, this viewership and how you get information. Um we don't watch television live anymore. You you stream it and when you can, when you're able to watch it, that's when you watch it, there's been a shift. So again, just because that's the way you've always done it, doesn't mean that's how you keep doing it. You know, you you need to evolve, so it's, I I feel, you know, you're not avoiding being transparent by not livestreaming, it's still the same meeting, um it has got to wait a day, you can go to bed earlier then, which is nice, you don't have to stay up to watch the meeting live. How many things do we watch live other than sports, and even a lot of people don't watch sports live?
A question, a suggestion, just because it seems like you might have a uh some data there, you mentioned there are a couple of schools
Mm-hmm.
don't livestream but record, do any of the schools, do you know, in Orange County not livestream nor record, and again, not suggesting that, just curious?
One, yes.
I I I was curious if this was a provision that that did it put into place during the pandemic? Was there, does anybody happen to know when that may have not been technically required anymore?
Two thousand twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Maureen.
Twenty twenty-two. And three, almost four years now, it's not been recorded.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, what did the board do prior to that in terms of documenting meetings, having the information available to the public?
Uh sometimes just the bit, um sound was recorded and that was really just for minutes. You need minutes, that's a requirement. But I I don't believe you actually need to even tape it and upload it and upload it.
Right, you don't need to tape it.
You need, you need minutes, minutes is
Yeah.
Just required.
Actually, that's something.
So I I just, um I echo what um Scott had said, I I don't um feel strongly about live streaming, but I think it has to be available, it has to be um posted and and made available to the public.
Agree with that, yeah. So just a little more food for thought there, those are my, the two notes. I want to share, anybody had anything else?
No.
Great, alright, wonderful. Alright, so moving on now to our last item, I need a motion for executive session. John and Ashley. Be resolved, the Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent not believing in the business portion of the meeting for discussions related to the employment history of a particular person or persons. Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thank you and have a great night. Alright.